Hi.
You want a house?
Just sit in the back.
Thanks.
Seven point eight million dollars.
Switch over. You're sorry. You're a ten bucks.
Good afternoon and welcome to the city council study session of Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. One item on the agenda is discussion regarding the proposed fiscal year ending two thousand and twenty six City of Norman budget, general fund and special revenue funds. Ms. Kim.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's my pleasure tonight to start the presentation series on the F Y A two thousand and twenty six City Managers' Proposed Budget. I want to thank all the department heads, city manager, and all the staff that put in so much work and effort into this process. It's a lot of work and I appreciate all the help. Um, I also want to highlight the art theme um on this first slide here. Anthony's vision for uh the budget and financial reports for this year was city equipment. Um, I think we executed it beautifully. Um, so you'll see pictures throughout the book and then there's a little descriptor in the um inside cover. So um and Anthony, if you're watching, we missed you.
I'm sure he's got us tuned in, no doubt.
Uh, so to begin, um, we'll start with what the budget is and everything that it encompasses. Um, it's a policy document. It expresses the values, priorities, and strategic direction of the city in financial terms. It's a financial plan that shows revenue projections and expenditure allocations for the next five years. It's an operations guide. Um, it's a departmental roadmap and an accountability guide. And it's also a public communication device. It shows how tax dollars are being spent and communicates the city's values and goals through the allocation of funds. Um, one of the most com- the budget book is one of the most comprehensive documents the city produces each year, covering nearly every aspect of our operations, priorities, and planning. So it's a lot of great information. Um, and then this is the budget calendar. Uh, the budget process each year is about a ten-month process. It begins each September with the Council and Finance Committee budget discussions. Uh, we'll go over the budget calendar in that meeting and they'll approve the calendar there, or they did in September. Um, and then we have the capital, the first capital project or capital budget study session in November, and we went over some like statuses on existing capital projects. Um, we had the Finance Committee mid-year budget review in January, and that's where we kind of uh we evaluated year-to-date progress and the council opted not to make a deposit into the rainy day fund at that point. Um, and more on that later. Um, and then uh we had uh our first uh actual capital project, capital budget study session on March fourth, where we looked at some of the proposed projects and then we got some feedback from council on those. Uh, tonight is the uh study session, the first study session on the proposed budget. Um, this is on just general and the special revenue funds, but that uh encompasses the biggest part of the city's budget. And then uh moving on, we'll have a public budget hearing on April twenty second. Um, a council budget study session on capital funds, proposed capital budgets on uh May sixth, another study session on enterprise funds on May twentieth, and then uh our second and final public budget hearing on May twenty seventh. Um, there's an optional follow-up study session on June third, and then council will consider the budget for adoption on June tenth. Um, of course, the be- the fiscal year begins on July first, and and these are kind of subject to change. We can move the adoption date around if need be, but this is our guideline right now.
We can't move it around too awful much. There's state statute that tells us we have to have the new budget adopted X number of days before the end of the current fiscal year.
You're getting ahead of me.
I should have known.
Uh, so when you look at your big uh budget documents here, um especially the big ones, the big one is uh the budget document. This is um all the budget, uh operating and capital, and then we have a smaller kind of supplemental book for the capital project budgets. But um at the beginning of the book, it's kind of like uh a high-level overview of everything, and then the further you move into the book, it gets into more detail. So um at the beginning of the book here, you'll see the city manager's letter. It's a lot of great information about like our revenue projections and the economy of Norman and so forth. Uh, the community profile section, um, let me move my page so I don't have my notes in front of me. Um, has all the demographic and socioeconomic information, benchmark comparisons with some other comparable cities, uh has a word map, um some great statistical information in the overview statistical section, pages eleven through thirty-five. And then all of our financial policies on pages thirty-six through fifty-five, our debt service policy, our investment policy, budget policy, so forth. Uh, financial summaries, which gets into the fund level, um shows all of the uh projections for the next five years by fund, and then it also has a really interesting overview for each fund. Um, you can, I think you can learn a lot through those pages. And then more into the detail in the fund department detail pages, uh one twenty-two through four seventy-one, where we get the mission statements and the goals um for each fund and, I mean, I'm sorry, for each department and division. Um, and then the goals and objectives for each division, the C I P summaries, and then outstanding debt at the end. Uh, the appendices are pages four seventy-two through forty-five, and that has a glossary in it index. And please interrupt if you have any questions as we go. Uh, this is a uh a depiction of all of our funds. Uh, the City of Norman has twenty-three funds, and these are the different types. Um, the general fund accounts for the majority of all the city's core governmental activities, capturing the revenues and expenditures that support general government operations such as public safety, public works, parks, and administration. You can see all those departments there, uh and then G F in red. Um, and then moving down to the special revenue funds, they account for revenues and activities from restricted or committed revenue sources, and those would be like the P S S, the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, Room Tax, Y-Tac, Y-FAC Fund. And then uh we move on down to the enterprise funds, which operate like a business, where user fees and charges should cover all of the operational expenses, and those, of course, are utility funds. And then our internal service fund, uh where services are provided to many departments on a cost reimbursement basis, and that's where we um manage our health insurance, workers' comp, um unemployment, things of that nature. And then we have our capital project funds there in brown. The capital project fund, we're by our uh seven tenths of a percent sales tax, and we've got Norman Foreign Sales Tax Fund, Parkland Development, uh U N P T I F District, Center City T I F District, or Tier Road's Recruitment, and then we have the Debt Service Fund there at the bottom. Um, so touching on financial policies. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I didn't see it in that list, but where does the uh civil asset stuff fall in the budget?
It's a, it's a special revenue fund, yeah, the seizure restitution fund.
Okay.
And we'll touch on that here uh later on in the presentation. Um, so financial policies that are covered in the uh budget document, um budget adoption is required by city charter via resolution. Uh, the Municipal Budget Act was adopted by the City of Norman in January of nineteen eighty, and what that requires is that at least thirty days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year, the chief executive officer, which is our city manager, shall present a proposed budget to the governing body for consideration, and that's what we're doing tonight. A public budget hearing must be held at least fifteen days prior to the start of the fiscal year, and that's going to be next Tuesday. Um, in two thousand and twenty, council opted to add a second public budget hearing. Um, and then, of course, they have notice and budget summary published in a local newspaper at least five days prior to those budget hearings. Um, by state law, a balanced budget uh is required to be adopted at at least seven days before the start of the fiscal year, so that's what Darryl was uh speaking about earlier. Um, and then uh we must transmit the adopted budget to the state auditor and inspector within thirty days after the beginning of the fiscal year. And then, of course, the budget, the adopted budget must be available to the public in print and electronically. Um, right now, uh, we should have our uh PDFs of our uh proposed budget on the website. Um, and then, of course, we have hard copies for anybody who's interested. Uh, more on financial policies. Uh, the council readopts our financial policies with the adoption of the budget. Um, you, the council appropriates the projected revenues and allocated expenditures with the adoption of the budget as well. Um, and then going back to the balanced budget requirement on the prior slide, this means you must have a positive fund balance in each fund. This does not mean that um current uh revenues have to be more uh than current expenditures because you can dip into fund balance, which is what you have in the beginning of the fiscal year, in order to have um a zero net fund balance. So um I think that's a common misconception that we always have to have um enough revenues in a given fiscal year to cover our budget expenditures, and it's not true. If we have savings from uh prior fiscal years, we can dip into that and that that meets the requirement. Um, fund summaries depict five-year forecasts that are formula-based, and that allows us to correct um or make changes if we don't like the path that we're on. Um, and then the budget document, again, shows our uh operating capital and debt reserve policies, and we'll touch on that here in a minute. Um, levelized utility rates, five-year, which um I had to look that up. It it basically means utility rates that are positive. Um, and then, of course, uh utility room tax transfers to the general fund for administration. And then we are in compliance with the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act.
You're saying the levelized utility rates thing requires us to have a positive balance in those funds at the time, or is it?
Chris, can you touch on that?
I don't know what that, I need to look that up. I'm not sure with that.
That's, that's what Anthony said last year at this presentation, that they have to be positive, so I'm, I'm assuming that that's what that means. Um, I, I mean, I can look in the book and see.
Positive this year, but next year, it's usually negative if we have a lot of capital projects.
Right. I think, I'm, I'm going along with the Municipal Budget Act, we can't adopt a, a negative budget, so that's what I'm assuming it applies to utilities as well.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, so to that point, and this might be a question for another time, but how does that impact our, you know, our city structure about how we have to go to a public vote to raise utility rates? If we're not keeping up with the growth curve, um at a certain point, is our hand forced? I mean, do we have to raise rates without a vote?
Well, and and we saw this um in the last couple of years when we started, when we were trying to raise our water rates, we really have to just cut out everything we can and maintain service. So um in earlier fiscal years, before the water rate was approved, we cut way down on capital projects, we delayed capital projects that were necessary, and we uh fortunately passed the water rate increase before it really got into a hairy situation where we couldn't afford operations, but that's what we do first.
That's exactly what I was looking for, because it's, we don't, we cut services. It's basically what, we don't just start charging less, we cut services.
Correct.
I will say, since, you know, we're touching on this and the potential to have to go vote on things again, it did come up that uh tariffs on equipment could have impact on our water fund, so if there's foreign-made equipment that goes down and needs to be replaced or repaired, um, and so I can see a situation where we might have to go to the voters, uh, because we are upside down.
That's, yeah, and that can affect any of our funds, really, um, but I, I believe that, and you can see kind of in the um fund summaries, uh, we did not opt to do any new capital projects in the Water Reclamation Fund. That fund is kind of in a precarious state, and we're probably going to be looking at rate increases um in the next couple of years.
So uh to Councilmember Grant's point, I know when we were looking for grant funding to assist in the uh automated smart meter conversion, uh, we got brownie points for made in America, and there were components, nobody in America makes one. So we had to go through a bunch of paperwork and describe, we've looked, there are no American manufacturers for that technology, and it's not crazy high-tech. But it was enough to, that, yeah, we, we, we did see that hole. We've cleared that hurdle, and I think we've got most of our supply for the meter conversion all locked up. And if I'm not mistaken, Chris, we don't do a whole lot of steel pipe. Most everything is a PVC form that we do manufacture here in the U.S. We have a lot of capacity to manufacture the lion's share of what we consume in both water and wastewater.
My apologies um for being stepped out. I'm not sure how we got down this rabbit hole, but we need to stick with general budget and special revenue funds tonight. Talk about enterprise funds later.
Thank you, sorry about that. Uh, so moving on to the Net Revenue Stabilization Fund Reserve Policies, uh, those were uh that, the Net Revenue Stabilization, but Stabilization Fund was uh established in two thousand and eleven with ordinance uh oh one, oh one one five eight, and then amended in two thousand and twenty nineteen with uh ordinance oh eighteen nineteen ten. Um, and what uh this ordinance uh requires is a minimum three percent of uh general fund budget expenditures in the general fund operational reserve, and then a mandated one percent general fund emergency reserve budget allocation in the general fund. So the three percent is in fund balance, so it's really like the savings, and then the one percent is like in the checking account. It's appropriated by council with the adoption of the budget, so. And then um in the Rainy Day Fund, which is a separate fund to hold reserves, uh, it established four percent of general fund budget expenditures, um, minimum there in the Rainy Day Fund, and then the target is five percent of the Rainy Day Fund, uh, five percent of budget expenditures in the Rainy Day Fund Reserve Policies. Um, and then a maximum seven percent of general fund budget expenditures in the Rainy Day Fund Reserve. So um when we look at uh the mid-year budget review again in January in Finance Committee, um, we're going to ask, do you want to move, do you want to make a deposit to the Rainy Day Fund that uh meets that target if we're below and so forth? So that's what I was um speaking about earlier, where in January we did not opt to uh boost our reserves in the Rainy Day Fund. Um, but what this, uh, what these reserve policies establishes total reserves of eight to ten percent of general fund budgeted expenditures in the general and the Rainy Day Fund. Um, so the council can authorize the Rainy Day Fund balance appropriation only if the general fund one percent emergency allocation has been spent and projected general fund balance falls below one percent. And federally or state-declared disaster, there's a federally or state-declared disaster in Cleveland County after the emergency reserve is spent, or if a one-time major repair or replacement is required. Um, so looking at fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, the Rainy Day Fund is projected to be above the minimum uh four percent level, but four hundred and forty-six thousand below the five percent targeted level. Uh, so as we go into the general fund and special revenue fund, um, budget and five-year projections, uh, the overriding theme, Anthony always likes to have an overriding theme, and I did my best. Um, and you'll see why here in a minute, but um holding the line and efficiency optimization is what we're going to be focusing on uh for fiscal year twenty-six.
If you read that to yourself with Mr. Francisco's voice, it has the right impact.
Yes, not with my voice, just with this. Um, so uh, these are the projected total revenues across all funds for fiscal year twenty-six. It's three hundred and sixteen million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Um, you can see the biggest piece of that is general sales tax at uh just under thirty percent, and then uh next we have uh fees and charges, which would be um utility funds um mainly, and then other revenues, uh, other taxes and so forth. Um, we compare this to fiscal year twenty-five, uh, total revenue budget of three hundred and six million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, it's actually a three percent increase this year. And again, um, that's not due to sales tax because we're projecting flat sales taxes that three percent increases because we're projecting slight increases in fees and charges um in the utility funds, and then other taxes as well as bond proceeds. Um, so fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, uh projected total expenditures across all funds are coming in at two hundred and ninety-five million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, the biggest chunk there is uh a strategic support in criminal justice, oh, I'm sorry, public safety, silly. Strategic support in criminal justice uh coming in second, and then capital improvements coming in third. Um, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, the current fiscal year, uh, our total expenditures were set at three hundred and six million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Um, so this is uh. What is happening? I didn't change mine.
Those two.
I gave you the wrong number, I'm sorry.
Those two graphs, when somebody will say, how big is your budget? Um, some people answer on the revenue side, so three hundred and sixteen million dollar budget. Some people do answer that on the expenditure side, two hundred and ninety-five million. So it, we, sometimes you'll respond, you mean on the revenue side or the expenditure side, but in general, you're uh responsible for a three hundred million dollar budget for the City of Norman, Oklahoma.
That's correct, and when revenues are higher than uh your expenditure budget, that means that you're putting money into the savings account, and uh vice versa, it means you're spending uh money from savings. But um, but the uh fiscal year twenty-five, uh, total expenditure budget, um, I stated wrong a second ago, it's actually two hundred and ninety-nine million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand. So uh this, uh, for fiscal year twenty-six, we're actually looking at a one percent decrease from the current fiscal year, um, and that's mostly in um capital projects. Um, Public Works uh was slightly down because we did uh put a hold on the micro-transit program with the flat uh sales tax revenues, and then there was a reduction in capital projects in the Water Reclamation Fund, the Sanitation Fund, and the Capital Fund. Uh, so moving on to the general fund, um, fiscal year twenty-six, uh, total general fund revenues by source, uh, one hundred and seven million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Then, of course, um, the biggest source is sales tax and use tax at uh sixty-five percent, um, which is uh unfortunate since it's such a volatile um revenue source, uh, but it is what it is, and we do the best we can. Um, next is franchise tax, and then coming in third is transfers um and license and fees.
And uh when the revenue projections are being developed, we are uh eyes wide open to what's going on in our neighboring agencies, and 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 we do look at the metro, then we look at the state, and then we look coast to coast, see what those trends are, are shaping up to, to show us. And in the metro, uh, our neighboring agencies are going through almost identical exercises in terms of where the belts are being tightened, and I think our revenue projection is more conservative. We're hearing Oklahoma City, they're recognizing the same flat revenue we're recognizing in the current fiscal year, and they're proposing a, I believe, a two percent growth factor in sales tax, and we're not that optimistic, uh, until we see signs in the market that sales tax is beginning to grow again.
Um, what is other taxes?
So that's uh like cigarette, uh, alcohol, uh, gas tax, and then property tax. Well, no, we don't have property taxes in the general fund. So here, that would be like cigarette alcohol tax, um, I believe that makes up the bulk of the other taxes.
Are there rules on how you spend that money, or is it just come into the general fund free and clear at our discussion?
It just comes into the general fund free and clear. They will put like a hold on um receiving those state taxes, like if we don't um report our annual um financial report timely, but um once we receive those, we can spend them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, then moving on to general fund, oh, I, I do want to point out, um, or maybe I already stated, uh, this is a one percent decrease compared to the current fiscal year's uh revenue budget of one hundred and eight million. Um, that is because of cost, a decrease in cost allocation revenue, because we had a study, the Matrix Group came in and uh did a study on our cost allocation calculations, and they recommended some decreases. So um the bulk of that decrease is in cost allocation revenue from our um enterprise funds and uh room tax fund. Moving over to expenditures in the general fund, uh, that budget is set at, or the proposed budget is one hundred and eleven million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven fourteen. Um, the biggest uh chunk there is going to be in uh police, twenty-eight percent of our general fund expenditure budget um is for police, and then second is fire, and third is public works. Um, in the current fiscal year, um, our expenditure budget was one hundred and eight million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, so that is a two percent increase. Um, there was a slight increase um across all departments for salary merit increases. Um, personnel expenses are about seventy percent of our expense budget, so. Um, and so this is where you can see um our overriding theme, holding the line. Uh, this is a chart of general purpose sales and use tax revenue history, and general purposes, uh, sales tax, um, and use tax that goes into the general and the capital funds. Um, you can see we have a slight uh uptick from fiscal years, uh, thirteen through sixteen, pretty consistent, then it kind of goes down for seventeen, and then it goes up a little bit for seventeen through twenty, and then we have that huge hike uh for twenty through twenty-two with the after-COVID effects, um, and then inflation, and then the last four fiscal years, that's twenty-two through twenty-five, uh, it's pretty flat. Um, uh, we had an average of eighty-three point six million the last four fiscal years in general purpose sales and use tax, uh, plus or minus one million, so um that's where we're getting the holding the line theme here. Um, and then looking at other um general fund revenue sources that are impacted by the economy, um, our single-family uh construction chart here, um, we can see with the line uh the values of the permits, and then the bar chart uh depicts the number of uh units for building permits. So um it did spike up there around twenty-one, when everyone was um spending all the COVID funds and building um after COVID or during COVID, actually, and then we kind of um hit pretty low there in twenty-three as construction costs were increasing and it kind of was too expensive for a lot of people to build at that point, but we're making a comeback in twenty-four.
Uh, and Councilmember Hinkle, from the banker's perspective, we know how volatile um the housing market is and highly dependent on interest rates of the day, and uh when the interest rates went up, the housing starts began to fall right in line.
And then you can, these, these drops also affects, affect sales tax as well, obviously. We get a lot of sales tax from construction materials and so forth, so these are all factors that we consider when uh putting the budget together. So uh more straight lines with our, uh, this is a chart that depicts population and employee growth uh over the last ten fiscal years. We grew pretty stre- steadily, population and employee count-wise, uh, from seventeen through twenty, and then in twenty-one, population went up, but we didn't really add too many employees. Um, kind of trickled up a little bit from twenty-one through twenty-three, and then we had a big hike in uh twenty-four to the employee count above the population trend. Um, and we've been kind of just maintaining that um through the uh projected budget in twenty-six, and and I have some more detail on that in a, in a upcoming slide, or the next slide. Um, in fiscal year twenty-two, we added ten employees, uh, citywide, seven to the general fund, uh, we cut one position, C D V G Fund, and then we added three in the sanitation fund and one in the capital fund. And then um in twenty-three, uh, the general fund transferred their meter services division over to the water fund, so that's where we have the minus ten, um, plus ten in the water fund, and then we added ten more employees to the general fund. We cut another uh homeless employee in the C D B G Fund, homeless advocate-type position, so that was a net increase of ten in twenty-three. In twenty-four, that's where we had the big jump. Uh, we are trying to use um some of the sales tax surplus that we had uh gained right after COVID. We added thirteen uh employees to the general fund, six to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, um, and those were those S R O positions uh to meet that uh requirement in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. We cut uh two more in the C D B G Fund. We added all twenty-eight employees in the new Y-FAC Fund when the Y-FAC opened in two thousand and twenty-four, added one employee to Westwood, cut four from Water Reclamation, added three to Sanitation Fund. And then in twenty-five, we added um a vet technician, um, and a, a communications and engagement coordinator position, and a cybersecurity analyst, but we cut an ADA technician position for a net increase of two in the general fund. Um, we added a program coordinator and cut two uh part-time regulator positions in the Y-FAC Fund for a net decrease of one position, and then we added a plant operator and a water distribution worker one position, and moved an admin tech position to the water rec plant in the water fund, and then the water rec plant had that added. And then the water rec plant had that added admin tech position from the water fund. So pretty stable in fiscal year twenty-five. In fiscal year twenty-six, we did add a part-time oil and gas inspector in the general fund, but we cut a part-time parking service officer. So net increase of zero in the general fund for fiscal year twenty-six. And then we added a sanitation worker two position to the sanitation fund for twenty-six.
With the positions that were cut, were these jobs that were unfilled or okay, so nobody got fired?
That's correct. There were there were no layoffs or anything. These were vacant positions.
Thank you.
So moving on to the major general fund revenue assumptions, and this is discussed pretty widely in the city manager's letter in the beginning of the budget book as well. But projections from twenty-twenty-five levels, sales and use tax again, zero percent growth for fiscal year twenty-six. There's one percent growth projected in the general fund for license and permit revenue, other revenue, and service fees and charges, and then two percent investment income growth. Three percent growth projected for franchise fees, other tax revenue, and fines and forfeiture revenue in the general fund. And then still transfers from water and water reclamation utilities of five percent of our revenue, based on private utility payments for taxes and uses use of rights away, that hasn't changed. And then four percent transfer from, four percent transfer of room tax revenue from the room tax fund to the general fund for administrative services. And then we have cost allocation revenue for central services provided to utilities again from, and that that falls into that administrative services for the room tax as well. But that's from the utility funds, and that's where we kind of had a bit of a decrease for fiscal year twenty-six with those calculation changes. More on the general or general fund expenditures assumptions, apologies. Salary and benefit category expenses budgeted for each position. Each position in twenty-six is based on contractual costs. We assume merit and longevity cost increases, but no cost of living increases in these salary and benefit budgets. Five-year projections are made to determine future viability and provide a base for remedial policy actions. In the out years, which is fiscal years twenty-seven through thirty, salary benefit costs are assumed to grow by five percent. Supply and service costs are assumed to grow by one percent. And internal service costs are assumed to grow by two percent in each of those out years.
And in the expenditure side, some of the expenses you'll see on those pages, general fund specifically, police cars, fire trucks, fuel consumers. And our fuel cost estimates are are flat. We were happy to hear that. Our fleet superintendent, Mike White, spends a whole bunch of time in the marketplace looking at those fuel costs, and there are taxes we don't pay on the fuel we use internally. So it wasn't all scary news. We did get some brighter areas in some of our expenditure categories. So we didn't see a big increase because the alternative is, I guess we could have fewer miles driven by fire trucks and cop cars, and that really didn't seem like a viable option. So just happy to learn that our estimated fuel costs next fiscal year should look a lot like current fiscal year.
And so you're not, when you do look at the budget for adoption in June, you're not adopting these out years. You're really just adopting fiscal year twenty-six. Again, the out years really just show us the big picture and let us know what's going to happen if we continue on the path that we're on, so. And then employee turnover savings assumption of eight hundred thousand is still assumed in fiscal years twenty-six and future. That's really savings from attrition. Or if we kind of have a little pause before we fill vacant positions. And then subsidies to special revenue funds, such as public safety sales tax, Westwood Transit, and Y F A C. Those funds, we can't adopt a negative budget. So if funds are needed for there to be a zero fund balance, the the general fund will provide a subsidy to those funds.
So as Kim describes, the savings we recognize for employee turnover, not every agency does that. It it kind of gets lost in a big picture in many presentations, and it winds up providing hidden savings. We'd rather show what we have seen over time. And that's just, you know, attrition and retirements and people moving to different agencies. So we account for that activity. And what you will hear in the news from some of the other metro agencies, they're talking about hiring freezes. And I would say from our perspective, public safety positions, you don't just hire a police officer or hire a firefighter, it's an academy. And so the the effort in identifying the appropriate academy size, when do you start? You don't start a fire academy or police academy when you have a couple vacancies. You usually need eight, ten, twelve, fourteen vacancies to make it a viable academy to help spread the cost over more future employees when you bring in outside resources. So those academies will happen in the next fiscal year as the size of vacancies materialize in both police and fire. We're always in the hunt for a dispatcher. There is no slowdown. There's, if we find dispatchers, we hire them because they are few and far between. Other positions in the general fund, as those vacancies present themselves, we're just being very strategic about when we start our recruitment. So I would say we're not in a hiring freeze. We're just being very strategic about the timing of when we fill those vacant positions.
Recognizing that even a couple weeks of a pause can have some savings. That's just me because I'm the budget manager. Something else I wanted to throw in here, also because I'm the budget manager. Anthony doesn't usually touch on this when he does this presentation, but just to give you an idea of the budget requests we received for fiscal year twenty-six from the general fund, I think it's fascinating. We did receive thirty-six base budget increase requests totaling one point four million from the different general fund departments. We did approve just over one million, but that amount was offset by one point eight million in cuts that were offered up by the general fund departments for fiscal year twenty-six operating budgets. We received two hundred and forty-six program requests totaling twenty-one point eight million in the general fund. Seventy-three of those were for new positions. And then again, we added the one part-time position and cut one part-time position. And of those two hundred and forty-six, we were able to approve and fund one hundred and forty-nine of those. Those are mostly computer and vehicle replacements. And these were all funded by the seven tenths percent capital sales tax. So it's not coming out of general fund revenues. It's coming out of the restricted capital sales tax for those purposes.
So how those decisions get made with all the requests. Everybody recognizes in a current municipal government operation, we are driven by computers, and that's how a whole lot of the work gets done. So Mr. Powers and his team keep a replacement schedule, and it's pretty darn accurate. You get about six years out of a desktop. The next thing you know, the software changes and the older PCs just don't have enough processing power to to function any longer. So those tend to get favorable reviews by all of the departments because we all rely on them. When it comes to the vehicle replacement side, very strategic recommendations coming in from the fleet to say, we're spending an awful lot of time maintaining this vehicle, although it may have lower mileage than another vehicle. The most cost-effective solution is to replace this one that is more labor-intensive. So it's it's not just up, it's ten years old, get rid of it. There's a decision made on each one about how cost-effective is it for us to continue to operate that piece of equipment? And then we also look very favorably on personal protective equipment, not just for police and fire, but other departments where personal protective equipment is a consumable as part of that daily job. So we want to make sure our employees have all the safety equipment they need. And what they're operating with provides them the ability to succeed in carrying out the mission.
And if you're not familiar with the budget ranking process, each year the department heads will go over all of the budget requests, and then they'll rank them in order of most critical to least critical. And then Darrell uses that information when he approves his budget request, so.
There are tears, it's, we run the gamut of emotions going through that process.
It's a good time. So moving from the general fund over to the special revenue funds is kind of just an overview for each fund. In the public safety sales tax fund, of course, we account for the half percent public safety sales tax as approved in two thousand and eight for seventy-one police and fire personnel, vehicles and equipment, and two fire stations. In two thousand and fourteen, it was permanently permanently extended to add nineteen more personnel and the critical capital needs, which was the radio system replacement, the emergency communications and operations center, the fire apparatus replacement program, and then to reconstruct relocate fire station number five. So as of fiscal year twenty-four, all of those critical capital needs are complete. The E C O C substantially complete, except for the relocation of fire station five. That's the only remaining critical capital need in the program.
And counsel, as it relates to that list of the critical capital needs, the emergency communications and operations center, the scope of the project exceeded resources available in public safety sales tax. And that's when A R P A dollars presented themselves, and counsel allocated a percentage of those A R P A dollars to that project. March fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, when it seemed like about half the state of Oklahoma was on fire in a big windstorm, the E C O C was in full operation, multi-agency participation. The facility was amazing. It absolutely lived up to the billing of what was needed to have the right people in the right place with all of the right communications equipment around them. Our response was fantastic, and that's because counsel stepped up to the plate and made that budget allocation and made it happen. So it it it's really a fantastic asset to help keep our community members safe.
And what do you project it'll be for station five, for the relocation, whenever that?
The facility side, I'm pretty sure we can accomplish that capital project in the five to seven million dollar range. There are a couple of design criteria that will be taken into consideration. COVID kind of shines a light on saying, maybe there's value in having individual rooms per firefighter as opposed to a dorm kind of a barracks where everybody's breathing the same air. So decisions to be made, but we'll have those detailed conversations with counsel before the R F P goes out.
And then recall that the 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 bond for the radio system and the E C O C will be paid off in fiscal year twenty-seven. So two more years of payments on that debt, and that's about three million dollars a year. And then, once all of the critical capital needs have been completed, the P S S T revenues will move over to the general fund, as will the expenses. So the three eighths percent of P S S T revenue to general fund, and then one eighth percent, I apologize, to the capital fund when those needs are completed. For fiscal years twenty-five, the current fiscal year, and then twenty-six, the public safety sales tax fund did require or will require a subsidy of two point six million in the current fiscal year, mostly because we're really progressing with the E C O C expenses. And then four hundred and eighty-two thousand projected for fiscal year twenty-six in a subsidy. Moving over to the room tax fund, the room tax rate of eight percent was approved in two thousand and twenty-three. That was an increase from five percent, and that difference will go to or goes to sports tourism. For fiscal year twenty-six, revenue projections increased by six percent over twenty-twenty-five levels. We did not have any scheduled park development capital projects proposed for twenty-six. And the two thousand and twenty-six ending fund balance in the room tax fund is seven hundred and twenty-four thousand. It's projected to be seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, but most of that is reserved for park development. So those parks, capital projects.
That fund, it doesn't make sense for us to just write a big fund balance. We'd rather put the money to use and make those park improvements as soon as the cash comes in.
And you'll see appropriation requests like mid-year, a lot of times, for these park capital projects. So moving on to the Young Family Athletic Center Fund. This is, this this fund accounts for the resources used to operate the one hundred and twenty-two thousand square foot Y F A C athletic facility containing two pools and a gymnasium, and began operating in two thousand and twenty-four. This fund has five full-time employees and twenty-two part-time employees. The Norman Regional, N H R, N R H S, Norman Regional.
Health.
Health system, health system, thank you. And concession contractor spaces are operational, and then the retail space is to come soon. The two thousand and twenty-six revenue projections reduced by twenty percent from fiscal year twenty-five levels, just based on two thousand and twenty-five receipts. So I think we may have, as we're learning, you know, nobody can under, the popularity of the Y F A C has been extreme, but we kind of overestimated the revenue levels a little bit for twenty-five. And now that we're seeing, you know, the trends and and what we were bringing in, we just kind of reduce that lower to 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 actual receipts. F Y twenty-six expenditures.
I have a question about the retail space. When you say coming soon, like this year, next year?
Should be coming online probably in the next forty-five days. They they found a, and y'all approved it. The the Young Family Foundation made an update to the space, spent about three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand dollars building out inside there. And he finally found a operator for it. And now the operator is working on ordering stuff to sell inside there. And they got contracts set up with Nike, working on, and Jordan, and a few other.
Can you say who the operator is?
It's Kyle Allison is going to be the operator of it, in his companies.
And we're getting sales tax off of whatever's sold there?
Yes. And we also get a lease payment, which y'all also approve of twenty-five thousand a year for that space.
Is that, even when that starts up, is that still in the projected five thousand plus?
Correct.
Like even charging rent?
And where we overestimated is membership. We we thought the membership base would be a lot larger than what it is, and finding the lack of a, oh, wait, room does not help us compete with other gyms in the market.
Could we potentially make that up in sales tax for items sold there? Could we potentially?
It would, that would not reflect inside of our revenue because sales tax is collected completely differently. But i- if you start talking about as, if you want to start looking at sales tax as a whole, I even though that we're losing, or going down a little bit in projections, or we think that the, everything around that in shops, hotels, other places are being very successful with how many tournaments we're bringing in.
Then after one year, you could figure out how much sales tax is collected inside of Y F A C?
We could.
Absolutely, and the ability for Ms. Sarah Kaplan to do some analysis, that laser tournament schedule over sales tax collections. And, yeah, we're way ahead of the five thousand in terms of overall collections.
Yeah, also with concession space, that that also collects sales tax. So we require them to, because understanding what their sales tax, that's technically private when you start sharing that, and we can't normally get that from the state. But through our contracts, which we have with both the retailer and a concessionaire, they turn in the receipts monthly to us. So we understand what they're collecting or how much revenue they're bringing in.
Thank you. And I I should have pointed out that no subsidies required for that five thousand here because they did have a little bit of getting fund balance to absorb that. So this is not a negative budget. Moving over to the seizures and restitution fund. We do not budget or assume revenue from federal or state property seizures each year. So there's never anything other than possibly interest revenue in this fund budgeted. But at the be, the end of this fiscal year, the current fiscal year, we do estimate that we'll have about one point one million in fund balance. They, there are seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand in proposed allocations in the seizure fund for fiscal year twenty-six. Not quite, six hundred thousand to replace eight police vehicles, thirty thousand for pivot community intervention services, and then a hundred and forty-five thousand for other police equipment, including H D U portable X-ray system, H D U crisis response toolkit, H D U pan system kits, e-bikes, and search and rescue drones. Those are all in the proposed budget for twenty-six.
What does pivot community intervention services encompass?
It is a facility that we take juveniles who are in custody and can't read at night with their parents. So they take custody of them. So they take custody of them, provide that reunification back to their guardianship man.
Do they go to O K C?
It's in South Oklahoma City. And then they provide those counseling and long-term services, get them connected with those services as part of that contract. It's a great benefit. We've been using them for several years once J I C closed.
All right. Thank you. They did request those funds for the pivot community intervention services in the general fund. But with the flat sales tax, we thought this might be a better fit.
Yeah, I was gonna say last year, if memory serves, we went through the state statutes on what this money can cover. Some of it was also domestic violence victims, of which I'm still a fan of funding that with some of this money as well.
I know we had a conversation about victim advocates that could fall right into that space too. And it's just a matter of making sure the people are available to fill those roles.
I think it was a question of reliability of this since it is also one of those more volatile sources. Anyways.
Who would love to have a victim not voting yet, but can't rely on seizure funds necessarily?
And then moving over to the public transportation fund. This is where we account for the resources used to operate and maintain Norman's public transportation system. There are nine full-time employees in this fund. About fifty-three percent of revenues come from the point one to five percent dedicated sales and use tax. And then forty percent of those revenues from F T A grants. The rest of the revenues come from parking fees, miscellaneous fees and other grants. For twenty-twenty-six, projected revenues exceed projected expenditures by six hundred thousand. And we did take out, I need to point out, we did take out the bike or transit program because if we left that in, it would have required a subsidy from the general fund. And we're trying to maintain the reserves we have in the general fund currently, so. The Westwood Park Fund accounts for the resources used to operate the Westwood Golf Course, the Tennis Center and the Aquatic Center. There are nine full-time employees and one part-time employee here. And then twenty-twenty-six revenue projections increased by five percent over twenty-twenty-five levels due to rate increases implemented in calendar year twenty-twenty-five. So around January, they had increased fees. Projected twenty-twenty-six revenues exceed projected expenditures by one hundred and four thousand for fiscal year twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Nine full-time employees and one part-time employee, is that to maintain in the off-season? Or is the seasonal employees for the pool, is that calculated into that?
So there is one full-time employee that's added to pull the rest of them and one part-time employee at the pool. The rest of those are all golf employees, which they're year-round based.
Okay. So and then the seasonal employees that are lifeguards and stuff, are they not calculated as part of this?
Not in there. It's still, it's still within the fund, but just not displayed here. The, and that will be somewhere around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five teenagers.
And we, these are just permanent employees that I'm counting, but I think they have. I'm not even going to say what I think your temporary budget is because I don't remember, but yeah.
It's six hundred to six fifty. We pay our lifeguards very well. We have to pay them to get them to come out.
Historically speaking, if another municipality closes its pool because of budget constraints, do we see an increase in activity in our operations and memberships?
We'll find out this year, so.
Is this the first time O K C's like closed down its pool?
So Oklahoma City's pools were, i- i- if you can go back in a time machine about seven years ago, all of them kind of looked like the old Westwood did. And none of those were included into their MAPS funding. So I think they made a strategic choice to, to close those this year. They had tough time recruiting lifeguards. And they had a heck of a time of getting people come out there, even when they had lifeguard staff. And they were kind of shuffling everything around. So I would imagine between just the cost of operating a pool, because it is very expensive, and the staff is just, it was an overall negative. And when you start talking about everything that we're talking about, that's probably one of the lower things that they put on their priority. But we're hoping that we can pick up some of that crowd.
So in, in, park activities like this can be accounted for in other ways. In some agencies, it may just be a general fund function. So if it's an easy cost to cut and it doesn't really change the revenue picture much, could be a decision to be made. The way we account for it separately, and our goal is to make sure the general fund does not need to subsidize these recreational activities. They're paying for themselves. We're keeping an awful lot of kids swimming in safe conditions, supervised conditions. Providing a lot of young people some summer employment, help build a resume, build some character. And, you know, all those paychecks, they go right back into the local economy quickly, so.
So then our other special revenue funds, we have the Council on Law Enforcement, Education and Training, the Cleet Fund, the C D B G Fund, which has a separate budget process. Art in Public Places, those revenues come from donations from our utility customers. And then we have the, the Special Revenue Fund, which is all of our grant-related revenues and expenditures. And then the Park Land and Development Fund, which those funds come from permit fees and then they're allocated to community and neighborhood parks. And that's all I have on the budget, but these are the upcoming council and public budget meetings. Again, our first public budget hearing is on April twenty-second, next Tuesday. And we always encourage everybody to come, participate. Let us know if you have any recommendations or suggestions. Public input is necessary. And then on May sixth, we're going to dive into the capital fund proposed budgets. On May twentieth, we're going to look at the enterprise fund budgets. On May twenty-seventh, we're going to have our second and final public budget hearing. And then an optional study session on June third. And then council will consider budget for adoption on June tenth. And then we'll start our fiscal year on July first.
The games begin many years today.
And then contact information. Are there any questions or?
Counsel, if you have thoughts that keep you awake at night, budget related, don't hesitate to fire off those emails. You can email Anthony or Kim or Jacob or all of us, and we'll track down those budget answers for you. And we'll just make sure you're as prepared as possible for when the time of the question is asked.
My kudos on your letter in here. That explains three quarters of things that we know.
The, the part about being an accountant, it's not the numbers, it's the narrative behind the numbers that makes it, that's, I mean, that's what I like about it. And when you can tell the story as to why that number is what it is, you can get more out of six or seven pages of text than you can out of four hundred pages of numbers.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you, Kim. I appreciate it. Very good explanation.